Okay. Let's go ahead and get started if that's all right. And hopefully, a few more people join us as we go along. My name is Jamie Jensen, and I am the Chair of the Board for Area 1 Agency on Aging. So it's my pleasure to welcome you here to our annual public hearing. I want to thank you all for taking the time to log in and join us even virtually and learn more about what A1AA is doing in our planning and service area and give us feedback on that process. Before we get started, I'd like to just quickly introduce a few of the people who are online so you know who's here with us. Maren Rose is our Planner/Contract Manager, and you'll be hearing more from Maren in a little bit as we kind of move forward through the day. Tess Martin is our Executive Administrative Support Person. And Tess will be available to you if you should have technical difficulties or need any or have any questions or comments. You can message Tess through the chat box, and she can assist you with that process. Maggie Kraft is our Executive Director, and Maggie will also be sharing some information with you as we move along. And Megan Gallagher, who is our Program Manager for the Information and Assistance Program, is online. So on behalf of the Area 1 Agency on Aging, again, thank you for joining us today for our public hearing. A little bit about the purpose of a public hearing and why we're here today. We will be, every year, the Area 1 Agency on Aging does a public hearing to review the area plan, which is a document that outlines the objective, golden objectives for services and supports that are provided using Older Americans Act funding to the planning and service area. Area 1 Agency on Aging serves the planning and service area of Humboldt and Delmar County. So the funding that comes into our communities from the Older Americans Act is then distributed through Area 1 Agency on Aging into those communities. So today, Maren and Maggie will be going over some of the ways that that is planned to be done in the next year. And Maren will talk more about what the area plan is and the process of developing that document. In addition, Maggie's going to be sharing today a little bit about, you should be able to see the agenda coming up. Maggie will be sharing a little bit about agency services during the time of COVID and what is happening with Area 1 Agency and in our planning area for that time. We'll then open up to a public comment period, and I'll give you more directions on that as we go along. In the meantime, while we're getting ready to start the presentation, I'm going to ask that people remain muted for the time that Maren and Maggie are presenting and kind of save your questions. And then you will be given the opportunity to ask questions and provide, again, public comment on the objectives as they're presented. And I'll go over that process as we get closer to that. If you, again, have any technical difficulties or need any assistance in the meantime, please feel free to chat with Tess through the chat box in that process. So with that, I think I will turn it over to Maren to talk about the area plan. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jamie, and greetings to everybody who's able to attend today. This is the first time we've done this type of format, so we really weren't sure what, how it would turn out, what kind of attendance we would get. But before we talk about the proposed activities for the next fiscal year, I want to give a little bit of background on what the funding, primary funding source that funds these activities. It's called the Older Americans Act. It was passed originally in 1965, and it's gone through several reauthorizations since that time. And it created what's called an aging network, which is essentially an interconnected system that includes federal, state, and local agencies. So it's a system designed to create planning and service areas by geographic location. They're regionally based. Our planning and service area is called PSA 1, and it includes two counties, Humboldt and Delmar Counties. And the entity that's assigned the responsibility for oversight of the Older Americans Act funding and services and related activities is the Area 1 Agency on Aging. The primary purpose is to help older adults secure and maintain independence and dignity in their home environment with a variety of community-based supportive services. It's designed for people age 60 and older. It does not have income requirements, and it does forbid means testing. It has several parts. There are seven titles in it. I'm going to give you just a little bit of background on the structure of it so it kind of helps explain how these services are funded and provided. It has seven titles. They're kind of like chapters in a book. They consist of subchapters, and each of the subchapters has funds, specific types of activities such as title 3Bs, funds supportive services. There's another funding title for 3C that funds nutrition services. Another one for family caregiver support types of programs and activities. And also, another one called health promotion that funds. The activity that we do under that is called SAIL. It's an exercise class, staying active and independent for a lifetime. There's a lot of requirements that come with the funding that must be met, but I'm going to give you just a brief overview of some of them. We have to create an area plan. Every four years, we rewrite it. It must be approved by the California Department of Aging, and they do require us to conduct a needs assessment. And I'm going to talk a little bit about what we did this year. The needs assessment at minimum has to be a survey at least, but also a review of the census, the most current census data so that we have a good understanding of the issues and situations of the people in our two counties that are older adults and their families that help support them. It also requires that even though there's no means testing and even though anybody can receive these services who's 60 and older, it does ask us to target services as much as possible to older adults with greatest need. And it has two specific areas, economic need and another area called social need. And then within each of those areas, there's definitions. And within the plan, we have to talk quite a bit about how we plan to make, to reach out to those groups of people to get the services to them. So the other thing that it requires is that we, at minimum, fund services in three cluster areas. Well, two of them are clusters. Access, which includes several activities designed to support people as they age and their independence in their home. It includes such things as information and assistance. Our Volunteer Driver Program is funded out of that and other kinds of activities that help older adults access resources and services. The in-home cluster of services provides types of services that help support older adults to remain independent in their home. And we'll talk, we'll explain what we have decided to fund in that particular cluster. And then finally, legal assistance, which essentially provides counseling and advice and support or representation by an attorney or by someone who's being supervised by a licensed attorney. The other requirement is that we receive public input through these public hearings on what our plans are. So just to briefly go over the assessment that we had, we did last fall. We started in September. We did a survey in five focus groups with a variety of stakeholders and older adults. And that happened between like September and December, which just so happened to be right before the pandemic really started hitting the country. And these were the top five needs that were identified by the respondents on the survey. And it's both, both of the two counties came up with this, the same list. It might be slightly different order. But number one for both counties was people wanting, feeling like they needed more help with housekeeping chores and yard maintenance. Also, and this also was identified in our focus groups as well, understanding what the services are that are available to them, knowing who to call, understanding Medicare and Medi-Cal, help with preparing for natural disasters. We haven't really seen that show up in the past, and likely, this came up because of the power safety shut-offs that people were experiencing this past year. And finally, help with legal affairs and advanced care planning. The other part of the survey, we asked people to rank their concerns. We had a list of about 20 or so areas of concern and asked them to tell us how serious or how not serious these concerns were. And so as you can see from this list, it really kind of ties mostly to money, affordability, feeling like you can, you're going to have enough money to live on. You can afford your energy and utility costs. And a big one that came up on the survey and in the focus groups was access to dental care. And that is an issue. That's a problem definitely for older adults, since most insurances don't cover that. And also, healthcare, you know, the concerns about not having enough providers or access to them, having to go out of the area to get specialized healthcare. And then finally, being able to age in place, which just, which kind of ties back to the getting help in your home to manage your household, home maintenance and repairs and so forth. So as a result of the needs assessment, we identified three goals, and these are pretty similar to what we've had in the past. And I've just kind of summarized them to make them a little easier to just follow, to understand. The first goal, it has to do with access. So we have a series of 13 objectives under Goal 1 that talks about the services that we want to provide and the activities that we want to do to help improve and enhance access to resources through information, assistance, and advocacy. So for example, the dental health issue isn't something we can provide directly, but we can certainly help in advocating at various venues with different organizations on that particular issue. The second goal is to provide services that are really essentially designed to encourage healthy aging, enhance and maintain independence. And so in that goal, I think we had 11 objectives that tied to, yeah, 11 objectives that tied to the kinds of services. Some of them are actually, could actually be delivered in the home, but to help like our exercise classes and so forth. And the final goal has, is more about us coordinating and advocating services and resources and strengthening the aging network within our community and then the research activities. So it's more of the administrative types of things that we are obligated to provide and to do on behalf of older adults. So the, all of this assessment was completed prior to the, as I said, we were kind of wrapping it up in December. And then, as you know, by March, we were issued a shelter in place order, which caused us to have to revamp and reorganize ourselves about how are we going to provide these services. So I'm going to ask for Maggie Kraft, our Executive Director, to talk a little bit about what we plan to do during this coming fiscal year, which begins July 1 after this pandemic. So I'll turn it over to her.
All right. Hi there. I'm on the phone, and so I'm, whoops. I'm on my phone, so it takes a bit to find the buttons. There we go. Hi, everybody. I am trying to get my video back. There we go. Hi, everybody. Thank you. Sorry for the delay. Thank you, Maren. And as you can hear from what Maren was talking about, that she's put a lot of time and effort into both the survey process and getting input and pulling together the information into the area plan, which is going to be, will be done in a couple of weeks. And as she said, we also were, we were geared up for one thing, and we've had to move in somewhat of a different direction. But we're, I want to say that our focus is still in providing the services that we need to provide and we're mandated to provide. We're just trying to provide those services in a different way and provide with more options. There are some services that we have started to do more of during this time, and that, the main service would be grocery shopping. We were providing a lot of rides to people for medical appointments through our Volunteer Driver Program, and those appointments stopped. Most, all of them stopped. And our volunteers, we really wanted them also to not be driving. And so we shifted to helping some of those riders have groceries so they wouldn't have to go out and shop themselves and knowing that many of them couldn't go out and shop very well by themselves. So we have volunteers, a different set of volunteers primarily, and some staff who have been doing a lot of that grocery shopping for a number of our clients. And that has been really appreciated and very important to help make sure they get what they need. We've also worked with Humboldt Senior Resource Center and the Food and Food For People to increase the grocery food that has been going to some of the home-delivered meal clients who also needed a little more assistance. We've purchased some shelf-stable meals that we've distributed to a number of localities, a tribe, the Wiat tribe, the City of Trinidad, Healy Center. And we're looking at working with Rio Delta to see if they would like any of those supplies as well. So that was a shift. We stopped doing, stopped preparing to do some of our in-home services, but we are gearing back up to see how we might be able to work on some of those, primarily fall prevention activities. That, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail here other than to say that we'd like to, we have a grant that we'd like to get into those homes and help people make their homes safer, especially with people spending so much more time at home. We really need to make sure that their homes are safe. Our SAIL program that Maren spoke of, the exercise program, went very early on, when we stopped the program because people were gathering and that, and that needed to stop. And we've created some online classes. And what we have about, we have our physical therapists, about three teachers who are able and willing to teach those classes online. But what we found is that many, many of the people who were taking those classes don't have access online for a variety of different reasons. Sometimes they just know internet where they live. Sometimes they can't afford the internet, or they don't have the proper equipment to be able to join that. And that is a real, a real issue because those classes, not only they were keeping fit and safe, but they also had their social time with the other class members, and it makes a huge difference. So that is an area of concern that we're looking into how we can help address that. We are still doing our home share activities, matching people with homes to people in search of homes. And we've been effective in making some matches despite COVID. So that has been very, very rewarding and for our staff and helpful to the people we've been matching. I think we just made two more matches. And our Volunteer Driver Program is starting to provide more rides again to doctors' offices. And we have protocols in place to make sure our drivers and our riders are safe and that we are making sure nobody, you know, checking temperatures, things like that. We're working on those protocols. Our office is still closed to the public. We are serving people. We're getting our mail, our email, our voicemail, and we're doing a lot of service on the phone. We're encouraging more service to be done with Zoom-type of things like this or other ways to connect. But again, a lot of that has to do with whether the senior we're working with has the capacity, you know, the digital capacity, the technology to do that. And we're always looking at how we can help address that issue. Let's see. Ombudsman program is not allowed in facilities at this point, but they are starting to talk about how and when they will be going back into facilities. So that process is underway, but they are still in contact with facilities and family members and residents and working diligently to make sure people are getting the care they need. And again, the HICAP program I mentioned is doing their thing. And INA is very busy. We have a different phone number that people can call INA directly that we're giving out to folks. And, but if they call the office, if people call the office, leave a message, we'll get back to them. So we're really trying to, we're also looking at other things that we could be doing just to help people more because this is really a long haul type of, this is a marathon, not a race, not a footrace, not a sprint. That's it. And this, we really need not to let our guard down right now. So we're continuing to make sure our staff stay safe and that we don't expose anybody to any unnecessary risk. I'll stop there and, Maren, and see if there's any things I left out. I know Megan's on the call, and I was going to turn to her to make sure I didn't leave anything out. So Megan, if I left any major items out, please jump in. Otherwise, it's back to you, Maren.
Yeah, I think you covered everything.
Okay. So, and just to mention on the slide, it says additional funding provided. We have received additional money from the Family First Coronavirus Response Act and the CARES Act. And during the disaster declaration, we were given flexibility in using the OAA funding in such a way that we could meet needs for older adults to shelter in place. So I just want to briefly talk-
Maren? Maren? Sorry, because I can't see the slides and talk at the same time. And now, let me just talk a little bit about that COVID funding so people know what that's for and what we're going to be doing with it. The Family First Coronavirus Response Act funding was for nutrition programs. So we are distributing some of that money out to the nutrition programs. We also use some of that money for those items I mentioned in terms of the shelf-stable food and some help, helping the home-delivered meal program. The Corona Relief Act and Economic Security Act, oh, relief aid and economic security. I call it the CARES Act. It is broader. It has money for family caregivers. It has money for the ombudsman program and money for nutrition, and then also money for what is called the supportive services. So we are talking with our providers to make sure that that funding gets allocated and spent in the best way possible. We don't anticipate there will be more at this point. And as I said, this is a marathon, so we don't, we want to make sure we are thoughtful about how that money gets spent. So right now, we're having conversations with our providers. We spoke to our legal services provider about the issues that they are seeing relating, resulting from COVID. And I saw that Nancy, you're on the call. We're going to set up a meeting to talk to you more about that also. This money, we have till next June to spend it, and we want to be thoughtful. So those conversations are happening now with our providers to make sure we, we don't just rush to spend it, but we spend it appropriately. Thanks.
Okay, so I just want to do a quick review of the activities that we plan for the coming year. And again, it's not quite finalized. Sorry, but my, for some reason, my spreadsheet or my PowerPoint isn't, is locking up. There we go. Okay, so under Goal 1, the activities that we plan to provide are ongoing information and assistance. It's an important, one of our primary activities that helps people get an entry point that helps link to services. And the second activity is public information. I've noted that these are priority services, meaning that they are, we have to put a minimum amount of our budget into these activities or something related to them per the Older Americans Act. And we're contracting out legal assistance again to Legal Services of Northern California. We're still waiting on final budget numbers from the state. We're not quite sure, those haven't quite been finalized. We're also doing, we're also putting in our plan housing assistance. We've been operating a North Coast Home Share Program to help with the housing issue, accessing housing. And that's a matching service for older adults as you are either renters or homeowners who are looking to rent space to someone seeking housing. Although we may not technically fund it this coming year, we want to put it in our area plan for future years that would enable us to fund it, should funding be adequate to do that. We're also going to be doing some activities on elder abuse prevention, some presentations to the public on identifying and preventing elder abuse. Our Long-Term Care Ombudsman Program will continue to be funded. Important program that helps support and advocate for the rights of nursing home and assisted living residents. Under Goal 2, which was the one about healthy aging and independence in home, we're going to be offering Homemakers, a service called Homemaker that essentially provides a variety of health activities in the home, such as preparing meals, shopping for personal or household items, helping with paperwork and light housekeeping and so forth. We're going to be continuing our Volunteer Driver Program on a limited basis and on a case-by-case basis. We're really concerned about making sure we follow safety protocols using masks and social distancing as much as possible, making sure people are healthy and not in, you know, in ill health so that there's any risk of being exposed to the COVID-19. We will continue to offer the exercise class through Zoom. Right now, I think we've got three classes a week, possible expansion, but we're not sure yet. We will work towards expanding that as we can. We will continue to contract our meals, elder nutrition programs, which includes the home-delivered meals and the congregate meals, and those also have components of nutrition education. The Congregate Meals Program will continue to be provided on a pickup and/or delivery basis until we get notice from the state. We will continue to contract the caregiver support program, and we're looking at adding in some objectives and modifying some of our objectives to help older adults be prepared for disasters. And, you know, especially in this day and age, how important that seems to have become. We're going to continue offering health insurance, our HICAP program, to provide counseling and advocacy to folks to help understand that. And we have a, these are not funded by Older Americans Act, but I wanted to bring them up just so you would be aware of them. And we also have funding for falls prevention program, which will consist of in-home safety checks and service coordination. And then the final goal is just to continue our administrative-type activities. That includes an advisory council, coordinating our services with a variety of local groups, advocating on behalf of older adults to educate and influence policy and research and planning activities. So that wraps up our presentation, and I wanted now to open it up to anyone who had questions. Let Jamie, Jamie's going to throw the ball back to Jamie to help us facilitate this part. So I wanted to start, if anybody had any questions on anything that came up in the presentation.
So just as a, as a way of facilitating this and moving forward so people get the chance to ask the questions that they'd like, I just want to make sure that everyone knows how to use the different tools within Zoom. I know we're all becoming very proficient in it. But typically, what I've found to be useful is to start with giving the people who are on the phone an opportunity to talk. And so I'll ask if anyone on the phone has a question. If you're on your computer, you can raise your hand by, I believe, by right-clicking on your name. You should see a menu, or there may be an option at the bottom. I can't see if I'm a host, at the bottom of the participant list. If you do not have a microphone, you can, as I mentioned, chat your question or comment to Tess. And so after- And so after everyone shared, we'll check in with Tess and see if there's anything that she has noted in the chat box to share. So with that, why don't we go ahead and open it up just to questions first? So are there any questions on, from anyone who's on a phone call, on a telephone? And questions can be related to anything in today's presentation or just in general about A1A services. Okay, what about anyone who's on the computer who has a question? All right, Tess, do we have any in the chat box? Great. Okay, well, you are certainly welcome to ask questions as we move forward, but at this point, I would like to officially. Oh, we do have a question, it looks like, in the chat box. I'll go ahead and read it Tess because I can see it. There's a question about transition specialists. I.e. social workers that help elders transition from their home to assisted living, et cetera. So is that a service that is provided? What does that look like?
Hi, this is Maggie. We don't, we don't help people with that process generally. But we certainly can provide information about the pros and cons. The ombudsman can provide information about. How to find the right facility, how to pick the facility that works best for you. How to be aware of the different charges that there are. And that process. But we don't, you know, I don't know if the question is about choosing a facility or actually physically moving into a facility. But we don't, we will help people with all kinds of information, but our agency does not do a physical move for that. We don't provide that service. We would, however, help work with people to see if, you know, to see if there ways that. That they could still continue at home if they had systems in place or things in place to make their home safer. So that service is available. We could certainly be in there and looking and see, because sometimes. Sometimes people need to move into facilities and that really is, that really is what they need. And sometimes they may need. Other things that could help them stay at home if that's their choice. So we would help them assess that. And that would be, you know, start that call through information assistance for that assessment. If you want to learn more about facilities and which ones might be appropriate for you to look at, that would be a call to the ombudsman program.
Great. So I think that, I think that likely answers it. The question was, I think, in general, Maggie, about just. Transition, what assistance is there for transitions from independent living to assisted living, from assisted living to maybe skilled nursing or hospice level care? Or the other way. So it sounds to me, if I'm hearing you correctly, that typically that would start with a call to INA or Information and Assistance Program. In which. Someone would be assessed to see, you know, is that actually what they need or is there something that might be able to keep them at their current level?
Right, right. Our INA staff, I mean, what happens when people call us, they also, they often have one question about something and what we do is we try to gather more information so that. Because there may be other things. I once had a woman call and said she needed to get a job and she was in her late 70s and I started talking to her about. You know, why? And she had issues around food security, but she had not applied for CalFresh, she had not used her food pantries. She didn't know about the senior lunch program. So what I, you know, discovered that is if we could find her food, then maybe she didn't need to go and work. So sometimes people call with one question, but there's other things going on as well.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any other questions about services or? I can hear you, Mike.
Okay, I just wanted to elaborate on my question about transition specialists. Because last year I attended your meeting and you're asking the public for input. And I brought this topic up because in larger metropolitan areas, they have transition specialists that. Help elders, you know, go in between these various facilities. And we don't have enough budget for that up here apparently. But last year, when I attended the meeting, I was told that you would consider. Focusing some of the budget on transition specialists, so. So I just wondered if you found any budget for that.
Thanks for the clarification.
Yeah, well, we haven't found more money since then, but at this point so far, at least our funds are not being cut. And so it's, I think the way that, you know, that, to do that right, I would love to have a social, hire a social worker and that's what they focused on. But we don't, you know, we don't have the money for a full new position for that. But what we are trying to do is have our, you know, ask more questions. You know, have the staff ask more questions about what people are looking for and what their, you know, decision-making processes and using the resources that we can. Provide within the scope that we have. So I mean, are you thinking, are you talking about specific physical assistance or more informational assistance?
More informational assistance and guidance through the. Through the system to get the resources that are appropriate for the individual because everybody has a unique situation, right? And the reason that I bring it up for two years in a row is because we manage unassisted. Living for elders and disabled. And what happens is we end up doing some of the transition planning for. The tenants that need to get out of unassisted living and get into an assisted living kind of situation or. Either that or they're just going downhill so fast they need to transition right into hospice. Well, you know, we're, we're willing to help, but we're definitely by not any stretch of the imagination. Very knowledgeable and expert on all the possible. Programs that they could get in or, you know, who they need to approach. And most of my clients, most of the tenants that live here, this is all HUD subsidized housing. So they're all broke and they can't afford anything. And sometimes their family just abandons them. And they don't have any guidance. And so I'm really looking. To social services to provide some kind of help with this kind of transitional. Situation that we have. And, you know, my tenants, most of them figure that this is the last place they're going to ever live. But it's unassisted living. So what happens is they move in, they're able-bodied, they're moving around, they're perfectly capable of taking care of themselves. And then gradually over the years, their condition deteriorates and so they bring in social workers and helpers to help them. But those social workers and helpers can't be there 24/7. So eventually they get into this situation where they need 24/7 help, but they don't have it. And so that's when we have to step in and help. But we're not experts at this.
Right, I, you know, I definitely hear what you're saying and I'm making some notes and it, it's, it is a need and in, like you said, in larger communities. In larger communities, there are private care managers. Who do this kind of work and we have, we have, you know, a few organizations that, you know, that might do some things like this, like Safe Planners. But they usually are doing it for people who have money to pay them. So. You know, then it turns into things like, do you call Adult Protective Services? Or do you call the Public Guardian's Office? And those are, you know, the Public Guardian has to take everyone's rights away before they'll do, you know, they become the conservator of that person, which might not be necessary. So. It is a gap. It definitely is a gap here. And I'm glad you're here saying it again because we talk about it and. You know, maybe, maybe we need to look at. Look at the CARES funding a little bit and see if we can be creative because that money really needs to focus on COVID relief. But maybe it opens up opportunities to do more in this kind of area. I'm also thinking even doing more educational classes. Maybe doing something with Ollie where we can, you know, help educate people as to what they need to be thinking about and asking and at least give people more information of where to go and what to do. Should they need this. So there's some options there, but I appreciate your comment, Mike, and I know it's, and I appreciate that you are doing the work you're doing because it is difficult. And we are a disjointed society, as we know, in terms of getting services to people as they move through different needs. So. Thanks for doing what you're doing.
And thank you for doing what you're doing. I appreciate your attention. And I understand the budget issue, so I'm just hoping that someday we'll be able to have. Some kind of support with transitions. So, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. I think that, um, a good place to start is to have, and what I'm kind of hearing from Maggie and Maren and my experience, my own knowledge of A1AA is. To start with having folks call the Information and Assistance. Number and meet with a person who works in that program and they can kind of. Look and see what is their current situation, do an assessment of the situation and help them with some planning. While they won't do it for them, they will definitely provide them with the information and the referrals that they need to do that. And there is even some follow-up with that, so.
Can I get that number from you?
Yeah, it's actually on the last slide, so we'll show it to you in just a minute.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, absolutely.
Let me give you the number for INA. It's 442-3763.
Maren, let's give them a different number than that because we have a more direct route. Megan, are you there? Can you give the number that rings to Erica's phone?
I am. I'm pulling it up right now. Just give me a minute.
We bought a phone for our INA person so they had a direct line to her at home.
Yeah, so at least during the COVID period, while our main office is closed, the best way to reach INA would be to call 273-3659. And I'll put that number in the chat as well.
Thanks, Megan.
Yeah, thanks. And then that is INA. What does INA stand for?
It's I and A, Information and Assistance.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Mike. All right. So with that, why don't we open up to public comment on the objectives and goals of the area plan? That Maren had gone over, so. Is there any comments or? Thoughts that people would like to get kind of entered into the public record in regard to that plan? And again, I'll give an opportunity for people who are on the phone to chime in first. Okay, anyone on the computer who has a comment about the objectives and activities that were outlined by Maren in her presentation? Leora.
Hi, this is Leora. It's good to see you all and it's good to hear what services are going to continue to be available. I would like to say that Area 1 on Aging is a huge support of elders and. I work with Adult Protective Services and we lean very heavily on. The information and the services that Area 1 on Aging offers. Often, we have the same, we share the same clients. So just wanted to thank everybody and I'm really excited to move forward with this plan that you're presenting. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Leora, and thank you for what you do at Adult Protective Services as well. Any other comments? Okay. Maren, is there anything else that you would like to kind of ask or?
I don't know if anybody would like to give any input. As I said, we did the assessment prior to the COVID-19. It's really a huge impact on our daily lives now. So I don't know if anybody working with seniors or who are seniors themselves would like for the good of the order to give me input on how is it going in sheltering in place? And what are your thoughts about staying safe? What are your thoughts about participating, you know, if we were to reopen? Would you feel safe coming to the agency at this point? Are you feeling like you really need to just stay sheltered until there's a vaccine or whatever? If anybody has any comments, I'd love to hear them.
Great, thanks, Maren. Any comments or input guidance? That might be helpful to Maren when she's finalizing the plan? Okay. Well, what I wanted to do is just make sure that people know that the draft area plan and objectives are posted on the Area 1 Agency on Aging website. And we will continue to, they will be posted there for you to review and. We will continue to accept comment on those formal comments to be included in this cycle of the plan through July 9, 2020. See, those comments will be able to, you'll be able to provide those in writing, either through the mail or email to Maren Rose, and her email is on the screen for you now. We do want to say that we always accept comments. So if there are things that you notice in your community or with the people that you serve or work with. Or your neighbors or whoever it is, we are always open for comments and input and so you can always contact us as well for that. But the formal. Public input on this area plan will close on July 9. Anything else that you'd like to say or add, Maren or Maggie?
I just want to let people know that the plan is due to be submitted mid-July to the state and we plan to put a copy of it on our web. Web page so that you can access it, the submitted version. It does go through an approval process at the state level, so there could be some slight modifications to what was submitted. And also I wanted, I forgot to mention that the assessment studies that were completed this year. A final report has been developed and also will be available on our webpage for access, so you can get much more detail about. What we found in the survey and in the focus groups and also in reviewing all the census information. And also thank to those of you that attended and for what comments we did receive. I think we were hoping for a little bigger turnout, but I don't know, that's, you get, we got what we got and I think, thank you who did come.
Thank you, Maren. Any other final comments or? Thoughts from anyone? All right, with that, I will go ahead and officially close the public hearing then. Again, reach out to us if there is anything that. You see as a need in your community in regard to supporting older adults and their caregivers or if. or if A1A can be of support to you. Thank you very much for attending. Bye.